Special Session of Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, Cochise, and State of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, July 2, 2019, at 5:30 PM at the City Hall Building, 915 South Toperville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, if you'll roll, please.
Councilmember Joni Giacaminho.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein. City staff, Stephen Pocken, interim city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Jesús Haro, public works director, Alberti Chavik, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a special session, and there are three items on the agenda. Item number one is discussion of possible approval of the municipal effluent option agreement between Cochise County and the City of Bisbee for a five-year term. And at this point, I'll turn this over to our interim city manager, Steve Pocken.
Thank you, everyone, good evening. The purpose of this first item is to get further information from folks from the region who have been working on recharging effluent for a number of years now and have succeeded in getting two recharge projects already started. This would be something that would begin to do something similar in this part of the river. I think that just to give you a little bit of background and a little bit of the detail of the proposed option agreement that's before you this evening, the whole concept of water conservation is no secret to any of us. It's something that we've all been doing one way or another for a good number of years to include several different iterations of groups that have been working for water conservation and now water conservation and recharge, specifically to benefit the San Pedro River. Going back to my own prior tenure here as city manager, there were a group of us that were appointed by then-governed the county, and I don't, the county and I were two of those people to be charged with the responsibility to set up a water district for Cochise County, specifically in the San Pedro sub basin. That effort ultimately was to set up a district to go to the voters and get approval for it. By a very, very slim margin, it was defeated by the voters. And since that time, individual recharge projects by different groups of people, different organizations in the county government and a couple of other cities in Cochise County have taken upon themselves to find other ways to do what's being proposed today. So just to give you a little background, this agreement that's before you tonight is an option. There's more than one step in this process. And most of the boilerplate came from other agreements, but the specifics of the deal that's before you tonight were discussed by county staff and by city staff. So which is to say that Mr. Gilligan and I talked on several occasions to come up with something that was workable for the city and for the county in terms of getting the job done and being paid for it. This calls for 200 acre feet of water, more if they need it, and we agree to it, not if we don't. And just to clarify, 200 acre feet of water is a little bit less than half of what we discharged in the previous 12 months of, well, from May back to Friday here. We actually had 106 acre feet of effluent in the most recent 12 months, the which we encountered. So roughly what the contract is calling for is roughly 50 percent. Comparing that to the agreement that you had with Freeport-Mackay several years ago, that agreement between the city and the company allowed for the company to take 100 percent of our effluent. So just as a, yeah, I went back and looked at it because I was curious because I was here when that originally struck. So that's a little bit of the contrast in the way this is being done. So and I just want to emphasize that with the signing of this agreement, any approval, we sign the option agreement, the option agreement comes with one-time $35,000 payment. That payment goes to the city and it stays with the city. Down the line, as the county is able to determine what and how they're going to actually build the infrastructure to move the water from our wastewater outtake to the river, then once they figure that out, then they'll come back and there's another agreement that you will have to agree to. And it's referred to in this agreement and that's the contemplated effluent agreement. Starts on page five. And that calls for a specific payment of $150,000 one-time on the effective date of that agreement and then $60 per acre foot for the first 200 feet of effluent. If we mutually agree to go beyond 200 acre feet of effluent annually, then the cost per acre foot to the county goes up to $90 per acre foot. So the term of this agreement is five years. The effluent agreement is contemplated, but not cast in stone in this agreement to be 25 years from the effective date. That's probably a few years down the road. We actually do the hardcore negotiations on that agreement. And so and the rest of the agreement is before you, is pretty much boilerplate text. And if you want to add anything to that, this would be a good time. Here.
I'm height disadvantaged.
I don't think it'll go.
You can pull that out. That's probably only word best. As Steve mentioned, the specific terms in this agreement have been worked out over a number, a couple of months. And the specific values were values of the effluent determined on the city side. The county's role in the agreement is really working to establish some terms so that in the option years, the county would have the ability to work with additional stakeholders to find funding to build the necessary infrastructure to convey the water to the river. The costs of that infrastructure are estimated to be in the millions of dollars. And in order to get a dedicated partner who will work with the county and other stakeholders to move the water at that cost, the availability of the water has to be certain and the cost of keeping the water at a given quantity. And Holly will speak to why the 200 acre feet was important as the base quantity to give that project long-term value. So in a sense, the terms that are here are necessary terms. We looked at what's the value that costs at $60 an acre foot per year of that first 200 acre feet? And why would that be something that five years from now, if in that term the option is exercised, meaning someone's paying for the infrastructure, we can convey the water to the river? The reason that cost needs to be specific is because if the pipe is built, once that value is there, the folks who funded that infrastructure, if suddenly the water that now has, because the infrastructure exists, a different potential value in the project, if the price became, since we have no negotiating leverage to keep a base price there, and it becomes very, very, very difficult, in fact, it would undermine the viability of the entire project if those standard terms aren't solid. But the negotiation aspect was built in on the additional water. Because any additional water, and Holly Richter will speak to the benefit of more water at the river, is something then that provides an economic decision for the city whether excess water has a greater value to the city at that time than would be paid for by folks invested in the recharge efforts. So in a sense, and I approach this agreement to approach every single intergovernmental agreement that I see. And it's coming up with an agreement that is, in a sense, good for both parties in an equal way. Because ultimately, we're representing taxpayers and community members who are impacted by the decisions. And so one party or the other can end up in a disadvantaged position based on the agreement. For those of you who were on council several years ago when this was first proposed, you may recall that the initial discussions of money were around $20,000 total for 20 years of committing 100 percent of the effluent to the recharge project. And certainly through the discussions that have gone on in years since then, we have been very sensitive to working through what can be a protection for the city of committing approximately half of a water resource at a designated value with a significant upfront cash payment, close to $200,000 in upfront monies with the $35,000 and $150,000 if the project moves forward, plus annual guaranteed revenues of $12,000 a year. And we tried to stay within, certainly from the county's perspective, a marketable scenario that would enable us to work with nonprofit organizations and stakeholders that see a value in the science and the recharge at the river. Because the one thing the Board of Supervisors was very clear about when they ratified the agreement as exists to pass it to the city was that our plan in no way, shape, or form is to spend our general revenue dollars to advance the projects. Because right now, today, the county is not in that financial position. And so we absolutely will dedicate resources to working with stakeholders. All of the recharge network that has been constructed today has been constructed through private donations and grant funds and really the building of collaborative partnerships. The land that was approaching thousands of acres of conservation easements that had been acquired to shut down pumping at the river has been acquired through federal funds, worked with the Nature Conservancy. And so again, it's not county general fund money funding recharge projects. And we really want to maintain that moving forward. And so in doing this and looking at what would become the ultimate agreement, we would be looking to have support from private foundations, grant funds, to build the infrastructure and continue in maintaining that infrastructure and not having a local cost. Five years from now, we're in a different financial position than the county, and there are other revenues available that would be appropriate to support this. Then certainly, we could have a discussion in the county board that would exist of possibly different people to decide what funds could be used. But those terms were very important to be able to provide a foundation to advance the project through funding agreements from other parties. Holly, maybe, certainly is the best person to talk to super, just give an overview of the recharge projects and that value of why would we even attempt to do this? And certainly, I will be available to answer any specific questions regarding what the county's potential interest is or what thoughts or concerns may have existed at a board level. And I will be available to answer any of those and certainly take questions, other questions that may come up.
Thank you, sir.
I think we might have to dim the lights just to see the picture a little better. If that's possible. There we go. Well, we're all familiar with the San Pedro. It's in our backyard. And we think of it as a green line, green tree that usually just drive over the bridge and you see. But really, it's an amazing asset. And people come from all over the world to see the San Pedro and its wildlife. And why is that? What makes it so special? What makes it so special is that it's a migratory corridor of hemispheric importance. Birds that live in South America, Central America use it during their migration to get to North America and Canada, millions of birds every year. There's 300 kinds of birds that use the San Pedro throughout the year and all kinds of diversity of mammals and other wildlife. We don't have time to even talk about that today. But I just wanted to mention that it's easy to think of the San Pedro as a little creek, a little stream. And when people come from other places just expecting it to be a big river and it's not, they don't really understand the value. But the value is this streamside forest that just supports an amazing abundance of wildlife. So I just have to start with how special this place is because it's easy to take for granted in our very own backyard. The thing about it, though, in terms of water, is that, as you know, we live in a very arid area and it requires groundwater to keep this lush vegetation healthy over the long term. So how we manage our water, including and especially our groundwater, has a big bearing on if this lunch corridor is going to continue to be available for wildlife. So that's kind of my big picture start. And I can't really get this to go forward from here. Maybe we could get someone else to press a button that works.
Not going.
Is there a secret button?
Where's Ashley?
It's obviously not the one you're pushing.
Yeah, oh, I'm trying them.
Yeah. Let's see. Could be some kind of arrow forward there. There we go. Oops, no. Yeah, we don't mean this Green Saber Bowl snow today, although it's pleasant scene.
Well, track down our city park that chose to leave at exactly the right time.
It looked like it was well underway.
It's kind of weird. It's not up here.
It's locked up.
It's almost like this is locked up.
Oh? Well, they're working on that. I just wanted to give you about a 10-minute overview of why the recharge projects are so important for the river. Hopefully, you can get the subtle graphics because it's important to kind of see the specifics of how the Bisbee's effluent project can really help remember the most where it needs.
It's almost like the input is the wrong input here. Is this, it's not showing what's on the screen here. Is this input the wrong input?
No, I can do it. Nothing.
Okay.
You've given up PowerPoints. Did you understand this has always happened?
A way.
Just different ways.
Just different ways.
Exactly.
The gremlins. Oh, actually, we're on the second slide now, I think. There we go. Great job. Thank you. This is just a diagram of the upper San Pedro watershed. As you know, the San Pedro is unique in that it flows from the south to the north, from Mexico across the international border into the U.S. And it actually goes all the way down to the Gila River, over 170 miles. So it's a river that's got a very large watershed, that pink area, and I'm going to be afraid to even try to point with this. So I think I'll just go up there. Obviously, the natural conservation area that VLM manages is a strong narrow corridor. It was the first riparian national conservation area in the nation. And that tells you how important that streamside habitat really is to receive that kind of national recognition. So there's been a lot of controversy, certainly over water issues related to the San Pedro over the years. Sometimes we care a lot more about the controversy than the collaboration. Oh, look at that. Steve has a planner. But I also wanted to, and this kind of goes back to what we were just saying a minute ago, is that there actually is a lot of collaborations happening here for at least 20, 25 years that we have a lot to be proud of. And I speak to you as a scientist who's been working on San Pedro reaches for about 20 years. The partners that I've worked with really closely are U.S. Geological Survey, the Ag Cultural Research Service, who have created unbelievable science and predictive tools for us to understand how water works in the San Pedro. And this is kind of science that's actually been recognized nationally and internationally in terms of its usefulness for decision-making. But again, the Army provided millions of dollars to acquire lands in those areas where pumping had the biggest impact on the river and also where recharge could help the river the most. And we use some of that science to guide where to buy those lands. So that was a really interesting partnership with the Army. The conservancy's role in that was to help broker those acquisitions of the land. We've also provided private nonprofit funds for the implementation of water projects and the hydrologic and riparian science related to them. And one of our recharge projects implemented by the Herford NRCT, they were working on erosion control. And one of their projects also has recharge benefits for the river. City of Sierra Vista's recharged their effluent since 2002. And that kind of served as a proof of concept project for us because we weren't sure how much effect and benefits it would have to the groundwater for them to recharge that effluent. There's been a lot of monitoring. And now we know how effective that project is today. Cochise County also now has stepped in and created some great projects, stormwater projects that they are now managing over the long term that are complementary recharge projects to this Sierra Vista recharge. And then lastly, but really importantly, is the engagement of citizen scientists who have been monitoring how the river responds to all this work and these projects for over 20 years. And these are people that will go out on the very hottest weekend of the year to map where water stays in the river and where it doesn't. Hundreds of people, actually, every year in the U.S. and Mexico. So I think it really speaks to not only the importance of the river, but the people's love for it to see this kind of engagement in all aspects of conservation. And something that I get a lot of questions about that I think folks were wondering about probably most recently is who's the Cochise Conservation and Recharge Network? And this is one of the newer efforts and groups that has come out of this 20-year worth of science, a smaller group of agencies that can actually build projects. And these projects are guided by the science that's been developed over the last 20 years with the vision of sustaining the flowing river and conserving our water. And also, obviously, that links to our ability to have a vibrant economy. So the members of the Cochise Conservation and Recharge Network are diverse, yet they all implement projects in different ways. It's the City of Sierra Vista, the City of Bisbee, Cochise County, the Herford Natural Resource Conservation District, and the Nature Conservancy. And we are undertaking not one project, but a network of projects that can work together over 25 miles of the river, helping that river stay wet and to continue to flow where it needs it the most of that 25 miles. There's no one project that can help the river, but a network of them certainly can. This is just a map, again, showing VLM's National Riparian Conservation Area in blue. And you can see Highway 92 crosses the river to the south there where there's a break in the national conservation area. We're all familiar with crossing the bridge there when we come and go from Bisbee. But the green areas are different CCRN projects that are currently underway. And so that kind of gives you a sense of how they're spread along the river. Again, our very best science has told us where are those projects. Some of the existing projects, you're, I'm sure, familiar with the Sierra Vista Environmental Operations Park. The picture on the left was when it was first constructed. The effluent had been used previously to actually irrigate alfalfa in those separate pivots. And so this is an old picture of when they were converting from using that effluent for irrigation to then creating wetlands and recharge ponds at that site. And so they continue to recharge about 2,700 acre feet per year. We've learned a lot about how the water moves through the aquifer from that recharge project. And the wonderful thing about effluent and recharging effluent is that there's a steady source of it. So really, we have two sources of water for aquifer recharge. One is effluent, the other is stormwater. Stormwater is great when it rains. And I probably don't need to say anything more than that. But using both of those sources of water kind of conjunctively makes a lot of sense. But you can't count just on stormwater during long periods of drought. And so effluent sources are usually relatively consistent. Here's a picture of the Palominas Flood Control and Stormwater Project that the county owns and manages on the left. And it's got, it's a really interesting project. We see seasonal groundwater level increases during the rainy season from a recharge at this site. And it's a pilot and testing site for what are the most effective ways to get stormwater into the ground. So there are built structures under those ponds on the left that you can't see that are testing different ways of getting the water down to the ground the fastest. And that's been a wonderful project and one that we've shared the results and the learning from that project with many other watersheds throughout the West. The horseshoe draw, sediment control and stormwater recharge project is on the Lad Ranch. This is a picture of when it was first constructed. It's about the 10-acre basin. And one of the concerns here was two traps of sediment before it got to the river. So some of these projects have more than one purpose, but they also provide for recharge, which is great. And it also increases the funding possibilities when they have multiple benefits. So getting down to kind of the nitty-gritty, if those are some of our existing projects, where is additional recharge needed the most of all? And that's really what I wanted to help kind of talk through with you guys today. Again, you can see that outline of the National Riparian Conservation Area. And on the right, this barcode thing is actually our citizen science monitoring over the last 20 years. And what it is, is if users to straighten out the river in a straight line every year and map where it's wet with blue and where it's not with white, that's what you would see. So every year, so this starts in 1999 and it goes all the way, this one goes in 2018. And each line is one year of where we found water if you were to straighten the year of where we found water, if you were to straighten a smoothly line out to a straight line. And you can see that some years, there's little breaks in the river that are rather small, but they're consistent in the same place every year. But you can also see that the northern part of the National Riparian Conservation Area hasn't had much water for a long time, for decades. And we actually see different habitats out there because of that. We don't see the lush cottonwoods and the lilies like we do down in the south. But this long wet stretch in here, that's the longest continuously flowing part of this river anywhere in its whole course, from the headwaters of Mexico all the way to the Gila River. That's the longest flowing stretch of river, really important area. What's of concern, though, and what answers this question about additional needs for recharge, is this area down here, which is of most concern. So Highway 92 runs right across right here. And you can see, if you look from 1999 and you go through the years over here to 2018, and you just kind of swivel at it, we're starting to see a lot more fragmentation of the flows and a lot more drying of the channel in that area. We're seeing a similar trend just south of the border in Mexico, so it's not just on our side of the line. And so that is an area where if we could replenish the groundwater, we would see some of the flows that used to look like this come back instead of some of these really, you know, long stretches between any wetted flows. So we're really concerned. And at any stretch, if the entire San Pedro that shows the biggest decline, and now I'm talking, when I say any stretch, U.S. and Mexico, headwaters to Gila River, that's showing the biggest decline, it is this stretch right here, just north of the international border. So the big question is, well, how do you recharge it? What's the source of water? Hence, a conversation today. But this is not, you know, we look at the river in many different ways. This is one of them that I think is most graphic. I'll go to the next one, which actually, if you were to look at the U.S. Geological Survey Stream Gauge at the Palomitas Bridge and ask, okay, so if it kind of looked like that, was, you know, the flows were fragmenting there, what is their stream gauge? The bridge thing has happened? This is a stream gauge that's been operated for a long time. And what it shows is the percent of days in a given year where there's at least one cubic foot of water going down the river. So the bigger the bars, the more percentage of days with flows. And I don't know if you can see those numbers very well, but over here, it goes up to 70% from zero to 70%. So 50%, if 50% of the days had water flowing in the river, the bar would look like that. If 70% of the days in that year had flowed, it would look like that. There was a lack of information at the stream gauge. There was no funding for that period. That's why there's a break. But if you were to look at the left side, and how many days the river flowed, and the right side, how many days the river flowed, this is again, you know, we put all these different kinds of information together to come up with these conclusions. This part of the river, and this is just downstream of that part I was talking about, is showing some really significant declines, and we are concerned because of that important habitat. And we can't watch without sufficient water. So now I'm going to kind of zoom in a little bit. This is a study that was, and I'm almost through. This was a study that was done a couple of years ago when we started talking about this idea of using some of this predictive modeling to just see what would happen if we recharged these wastewater from the San Jose Wastewater Treatment Plant near the San Pedro. We looked at a couple of things at that time. There were questions like, what would the impact be by moving the treated effluent out of the recharge near Green Rose Draw, and would that affect our wells? There's some statistics here that I could go through for you, but the bottom line is that there's really only about a 2% change in well levels if that recharge, and this is now talking about 400 acre feet moving to the river. So very little change in terms of water availability at your drinking supply wells. But the one I really did want you to see is also how the recharging near the river will affect those conditions that keep that forest healthy. And what this shows is three different scenarios. On the left, it shows what would happen if we could recharge 200 acre feet, 300 acre feet, and 400 acre feet. The yellow gold blob is the area where our very best science models tell us that groundwater would rise. So by recharging 200 acre feet, you could actually benefit about 630 acres on the edge of the San Pedro Riparian National Conservation Area. And that's, you can see the river is this dark area, flood plain here. And again, Highway 92 is crossing right here. So this is the area of benefit, a little bit more benefit as well up there. And I think this is really important because I think there's a lot of misunderstandings about who benefits from doing this project. It's that blob right there. And we are, we are pretty certain about where those benefits would accrue at different levels. So you can see more benefits of 300 acre feet, even more benefit at 100 acre feet. In fact, if we could recharge it from 400 acre feet a year, it would benefit over 1,900 acres, an almost continuous improvement in the groundwater conditions for the habitat from the international border up to the Herford Bridge. So we're lucky to have the science that gives us those ballpark estimates. We're lucky to have the collaboration that allows us to afford not only the science, the land acquisition, and also the construction of the projects. I think we have a lot to be proud of, but at the same time, I'm really worried about this one stretch of river in particular. I think this is just a summary of, again, how much benefits according to how much you recharge in that area. You get a longer acre river, you get 4.4 miles of benefit of the actual river, and 1,900 acres of 400 acre feet. I'm going to stop there, and hopefully that's the information you guys were looking for. If you have other questions, do you really want to answer anything that's science-based?
Thank you. Counsel, questions? None?
I have a few. I guess, starting with my concern with county, you know, we're talking about doing this effluent charge to save the river and raise the water table. Yet we have a developmental project that was just given an extension that's right here, that zone you're talking about. It's a housing project. And instead of going back and revamping it and rewriting the restrictions on it, they just extended the original plan. It's going to open up to more housing development, which will include more water pumping. You know, what's that going to do with this effluent? It seems like a positive-negative between, oh, we're going to put in water, this effluent, and it just makes it so for three years, in three years, maybe the county can go back and let those restrictions take place development. That's my concern. And that has been my concern. I don't trust the county. I don't trust the county superintendents because they don't, they don't monitor any of the counties when it comes to water usage. I have property out in the Salt Spring Valley. I have some holes in my property because they have not monitored agriculture at that day. So what makes me think that they're going to monitor it out here, and all we're doing is feeding into their developmental growth. I mean, that's my main concern.
There's one thing I'd like to say about that, which is I don't want to comment on the county's growth policy because that's not what I know. But here's what I do know, is that this is not a problem related to future development. This is a problem that has already developed from every gallon we've started pumping since 1940.
Right.
And so in a way, I mean, it's almost like you're, I feel like folks are optimists who worry about future pumping, because we have a really big problem there today that we can address and need to address, and the clock is ticking, and we don't have the incentive of waiting. But what is happening to address that in, say, two decades, when all of a sudden it's ground zero, and we're right back where we're at, but we need more water? That's the issue. Nothing right now substantial seems to be being done as far as the future.
So, and I want to clear up any uncertainties with regard to Cochise County's policies with regard to water.
I have been in county administration now almost four years. I have learned an extraordinary amount about water issues in the county. And the one thing that impresses me the most is that our county government, in terms of what has this county done to ensure water resources, what it's done is impose the most aggressive water policies under its statutory authority that it can in Arizona. When the Arizona Legislature passed legislation that enabled counties to mandate that any development would come with a 100-year water issuance, the county immediately enacted that. One other county in Arizona has done that. And with regard to agricultural pumping, and that's the real story of drain on the aquifer, is agricultural pumping, okay? And the county has, through its partnerships, the best way to deal with that, because we can't control whether or not we get active management areas, water policy in Arizona is controlled at a state legislative level. And water politics in Arizona are extraordinarily complicated. And so locally, the best thing we can do is partner with other entities, acquire agricultural land, and shut down the wells. And we have done that. And that's, when you look at those stretches of river that are healthy, that is a tremendous product of shutting down agricultural wells in the area, and then we're compounding that positive effort by taking that land and absolutely not allowing any development on that land, restricting it to your conservation easement, and then using, in areas where the permeability is best, targeting that for recharge. Because not every stretch of ground in the county is a good place to put water and have it soak into the aquifer. And so where am I coming on this? Counsel, I would respectfully disagree with the idea or notion that's out there, that Cochise County Government is absolutely not concerned, is not taking positive actions to address water issues across the county, and to ensure a water future that is appropriate to meet our needs and the needs of the land that we are all entrusted with protecting.
Thank you, Mr. Gillian. You have a second? Do you have a question?
Yeah. It has to do with the water, but I respectfully invite you to come lock the property I own out in Salt Spring Valley to show you the effects of Cochise County's great water job. Anyway, effluent is known not to be the same as the water that's running in the river. So how is that affecting, and what studies have been done, as soon as it's going to affect the well, like this apple San Pedro, like the chub and everything else that's there? Because there's, what, four different fish species? Are there not in the San Pedro at this level?
Yeah, so, and I believe what you're asking is water quality?
Yep, as far as like the hormones, pharmaceuticals, everything else that generally does not necessarily get filtered out of effluent.
Right, right. So there are no regulatory requirements for some of those pharmaceuticals today, but what is the very best actually remedy for them is what's called Soil Aquifer Treatment, SAT, which means moving through that underground aquifer very slowly, and that can take years and decades to get to the river, is actually the very best filter as opposed to just putting effluent in a ditch and shooting it into the river. And so actually, using it for aquifer recharge has two purposes. Number one, it fills up the aquifer. And number two, it has time to be cleaned as it goes through that porous aquifer towards the river. And I do believe that part of our monitoring program for this network of projects will be looking at the benefits of aquifer treatment from a quality standpoint as well as one.
So there's no studies right now going on to see the effect of effluent water on wildlife? That's what I was like, question. But studies are out there.
Yeah, there's no studies on the San Pedro looking at that specifically right now, but there will be monitoring of these projects for those kinds of considerations, absolutely.
Counsel, do we have questions?
Thank you. When you talk about other stakeholders that you're going to get with to build the infrastructure, who are you specifically thinking of?
So again, that CCRN group has worked together to build projects, and I'll just say that every project has had substantial private funding from foundations and grants. We've also gotten grants from ADQ, so the Horseshoe Draw project actually had a water quality component to it to decrease ECOI and also to trap sediment in it. So sometimes we can get grants for some of the other benefits that these, you know, that these projects have in addition to recharge. Every project has a unique funding stream associated with it. There's a project that's in its design phase right now at the Bella Vista Track, where the NRCS is funding that project from a watershed health grant, because that's all the runoff from Sierra Vista that we're trying to slow down, again, get it back into the aquifer so that it can be cleansed through the aquifer before it gets to the river. Every project's a little different in terms of the type of water that's being recharged and the benefits that it has. But I don't think there's one project, and that would include the city's Environmental Operations Park, which was funded by the Bureau of Recreation and the Water Protection Fund. Every single one of them has multiple partners funding them.
So it's mostly like governmental and private environmental agencies?
Yes.
Any other questions?
The price of the effluent, effluent, I'm sorry, what you were saying was that you need to have this price locked in?
Correct.
Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so because it's a project that ultimately holds the value of getting, we've got to convey the water to that strategic area near the river. That project is going to need a lot of funds. And in order... And in order for us to work with those folks, go through the grant application process, the quantity of water that would be supplied, so that the science that's available showing what the impact is, is important. And connected to that is our, any entity's capacity to pay for that designated quantity over the life of the agreement. And those two factors together make this marketable in terms of our ability to transparently work with people and know that if infrastructure is built, this is how much it will cost to put the minimum quantity of water at the river. Having that value amount fluctuate would honestly render this impossible to get the necessary people. And frankly, I wouldn't, in working with the Board of Supervisors in structuring that agreement, I wouldn't be able to support to them in protecting the county's interests of financial certainty in this and having a viable end product. Because once the pipe is built, you could, ultimately, we would risk having the cost of the water exponentially increase and become economically not sustainable. So, and the $60 value amount, and I think the city can possibly speak to that, that we early on highly provided data on every single effluent transaction in the city of Arizona, the dollar amount per acre foot, and the location that the agreements were made. Most of the effluent market is in the Phoenix metropolitan area. Your agreement with the mine was the only agreement in the southern part of the state that placed a value on effluent. And some of the tendencies, the more effluents available, the lower the value per acre foot. $60 was kind of at the heart of the market. And we tried to build in the flexibility with the additional volume of water that would certainly provide viability for the city to determine if there's a, if there's a higher and better use that would come at a better value. Yes.
Yeah, I don't have any problem, you know, recharging the river, which is with this effluent. But I'm troubled by a number of things. One of the things I'm troubled by is the fact that we don't have a lawyer. That's trouble. We have no one who's reviewed this from the city's point of view. That's trouble. The other thing that's troubling is, this is from... The other thing that's troubling is, this is from the Water Infrastructure Authority of Arizona. Utilities usually sell reclaimed water at variable prices. The fee you charge per 1,000 gallons is 77 cents per 1,000 gallons. Some utilities will even offer effluent for free from company standpipes or sell it market-free, which is whatever the price of customers go into picking the water. Municipalities, on the other hand, and you're probably talking about Phoenix and Tucson, usually sell reclaimed water at higher prices than four protons, although still lower prices than potable water. The medium volumetric charge for reclaimed water offered by municipalities is $1.67 per 1,000 gallons. Many municipalities also have base charges associated with the reclaimed water rates. And the city of Flagstaff has even developed an increase in the structure for their reclaimed water supply. Now, $1.67 for 1,000 gallons, an acre foot is 325,851 gallons. So if you multiply 325,851 gallons times $1.67, that puts an acre foot of effluent at $544. So $60 as compared to 544. Could you explain that?
So here's the economy of effluent in a nutshell. It has its highest value if there's a large corporate entity, say a computer processing plant that needs water to cool conditioning units to produce their products. And they would be paying a municipal rate for delivering a potable water. And to use that potable water for that purpose to generate their business would be a poor investment when effluent can be obtained. So Chandler, for example, has their effluent going to a computer technology firm for cooling, for their processing. So here in southern Arizona, that's the challenge. There, you know, there is not a large business entity to come in and want that supply. There's certainly, in this idea of committing effluent for 20 years, I understand and it's been part of our discussions with city of having effluent available if something like that were to happen. Well, a large computer manufacturer moved into the Bisbee area and brought with it jobs for 100 people and the community grew. The supply of effluent would grow proportionate to that use. There would be excess effluent available for the city to sell to that vendor. I mean, in this analysis, when we started at 20 grands, it was because Bisbee's effluent was being discharged at the side of a road for no return on $0 to Bisbee for that. This project, and when we consulted with a company that places value on effluent, I said, well, you know, this is interesting because the only thing giving value to the effluent is the pipe that you've got to fund other money to fund. And so it compromises the value of the effluent because it takes a multimillion dollar pipe to move it to the place that it has value for the projects. You know, if there's a bidder for $350 an acre foot to buy Bisbee's effluent, as a citizen in Bisbee, I would say that's a great economic decision for the city. That's a super good thing. It's just, given our economy and the condition of the overall economy in the county, there's nobody buying effluent in our county for anything other than an environmental purpose. And currently in Sierra Vista, there's no value on the effluent.
So Sierra Vista just gives you the effluent?
Yes.
2002.
I realize there's no market for the effluent here, but you know, I'm aware of that. And but it just seems, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, Counselor. There may be a market for effluent here at some time. That's a possibility. You lay out the possibility that some company may come and bring 100 employees with it. Unlikely, but possible. And it's possible that somebody may come along and want to use it for some sort of agricultural purpose or something like that. So giving this effluent away at $60 an acre foot, that would be out of the goodness of our hearts for the most part. And that would satisfy your investors, obviously, the people that you're going to be talking to about this. That would satisfy them, obviously. But locking this in to, you know, this long term with no opportunity opportunity to renegotiate that 200 acre feet. Yeah, I understand there is an option in there to renegotiate anything over the 200 acre feet. And, you know, I think there should be an option at some point in this contract for future generations to be able to say, hey, this is a lot more valuable than $60 an acre foot. That's my biggest concern. And that and the fact that we have no lawyer to speak for us.
Let me just indicate one thing about the lawyer, Mr. Higgins. As a counsel, we actually addressed that a year ago. And we waived conflict just as the Board of Supervisors waived conflict. So our city attorney and the county attorney's office together drew up these documents. They were drawn up by a lawyer who specializes in water law. So I just wanted to mention that.
Well, that might have been true Sunday, but this Tuesday. And the circumstances have changed from Sunday to Tuesday.
One additional point I know Steve wants to make, but on the value of the acre feet, I would strongly encourage counsel not to lose sight of the $150,000 that conveys at the onset of the agreement. Because that increases that value per acre foot. And honestly, that hangs in there through the term of this agreement. Almost at 50% additional of the value per acre foot of those 200 acre feet. So that's a really, really important financial consideration that has not been discussed. And I think that focusing on what is today a very fair market rate for water that inconsistent with what the mine would pay. But $150,000 is a significant amount of money. And it was leveraged in the agreement to provide a fair amount of capital to the city upfront at a time that capital funds would be important.
Mr. Buck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Higgins, I actually anticipated your question.
I'm sure you did.
And because knowing that today was July and not June, we are in a position, without objection from the counsel, to have any agreement that is brought forward for your consideration to be reviewed by a local firm. We've got two local firms we'll be hearing more about in the next week. But for relatively small money, money something less than what you would have to approve, but I would request it anyway, we can have this agreement reviewed again.
Well, that's kind of glad that you've taken that action. Thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah, we can do that this week or what's left.
Yeah, no problem, but we're voting tonight. So maybe we should table this until we have our lawyer on table and have.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident based on legal counsel that I have worked on this uptilt now. And I certainly understand where you're coming from on this. And just to further add to the discussion of value, the history of the Bisbee wastewater treatment plant, which first discharge occurred in May of 2006. We have pumped the vast majority of that into the greenwash drug. However, there was a pipeline built between the discharge point and, well, I'm just going to call it your question after all first because that's what Bisbee overhaired. That was a million dollar federal grant that placed the pipe in the ground to convey 100% of our effluent from the wastewater plant to the golf course. That money for the pipeline was a federal grant. The city was paid nothing for the effluent. And then the last piece of history on the effluent, of course, is I think you're all familiar with selling the discharge to free port fill information purposes. And that water was sold at approximately $82 dollars per acre foot for industrial use as opposed to beneficial recharge use. And I think that agreement has expired. But I know that the company still stands ready to use it if we can supply it. And that's part of the reason for not committing all of our water to one place. So other people who needed to use water for reclamation or beneficial use, there would still be water available.
If that actually expires September 30th this year.
Steve, thank you.
Do you have a question?
Well, I had a comment. I wanted to thank Ed for bringing that up about the $150,000. Because when you divide that by 25 years, you're actually getting $90 an acre foot. So the price is really, with that $150,000, it's $90.
I had another question, but I wasn't sure if it was to ask. And it has to do with liquidated damages, such broad range between liquidated damages that will be assessed against Bisbee and that would be assessed against the county. Why is it such a broad range? I mean, it's 1.7 million against us.
So real specific reason for that broad range. And I allowed, in terms of the county samples, the figure to be set by Sarah Ransom in the county attorney's office. City of Bisbee damages were calculated on the city of Bisbee side. But essentially, the idea is if we enter into the agreement and one or the other party defaults in the agreement, the damages amount is a predetermined settlement that would be paid to the party that didn't default. And so for the city of Bisbee, the calculation, you're not incurring infrastructure costs. You're the recipient of cash funds for all of the effluent that conveys. And if the agreement at some point in the future goes away, that damages amount is based on the idea that potential other buyers, markets for the effluent would have come and gone that you couldn't take advantage of because of the agreement. So it pays you a significant sum of money in the event of a default. I will tell you that that amount is so significant that we would be better off paying for the volume of water for the rest of the term because it's hundreds of thousands of dollars for defaulting. When we look at and you analyze the gap to the county's losses and say, oh, my gosh, this is millions of dollars. The reason is this pipeline is estimated to cost eight and a half million. And so if someone comes to the table through grant funds and puts a pipe in to convey 200 acre feet a year for 25 years, and the city stops supplying the water, just says, we're not going to do this anymore. We don't want the $60 an acre foot. We got the 150, we got the 35,000 for the option agreement. The pipe got built and now the water's not available. Well, the county, if the county signed a grant agreement for the pipe to be built and the water's not available, we would be repaying the full value of the pipe to whoever funded it at a potential cost of the installation cost of the pipe. And honestly, we're talking about millions and millions. So the amount that you see there is not even the full estimate value of the buildout of the pipeline. And the idea there is to have a number that would ensure protection at some level for the individual organizations that value that product in that river and the health of the river. And we'll fund that on the idea that that water is available to be put there for this time of the agreement. And we did the benefit of the science. And that's where that comes from. It's based on real financial potential for loss.
So then you'll be providing us with those figures, right? That you're talking about? If you're going to estimate a 1.7 million, they're not providing us with the total cost of building a pipeline?
I, what I'm-
I have a question.
What I'm absolutely telling you is the estimate to build that pipeline is in excess of $8 million a year. And that certainly consideration in estimating those damages that you see in this contract, that is, again, if we get into, these are two governments needing to ultimately decide that there is value in a project under the terms that are established for a long-term benefit to try to sustain this incredible natural resource that is there for us to take care of. And if we end up in a legal battle years from now and paying for lawyers, liquidated damages and being established in a contract are the same legal fees down the road if something goes terribly wrong. And it's, I can tell you the number there is extraordinarily, it's a significant number, but it's extraordinarily generous as well. And certainly when we get into any agreements, we're going to have to ensure there are protections for the county to prevent against some colossal loss if the project doesn't reach its fulfillment. Does that money in the contract would not be enough to repay the pipeline builders?
Right, but you're saying you're getting grant funding, so with grant funding, you have to have a budget. So I don't see why the issue would be providing us with that budget to see what the total cost is. Because if we're locking into something for 25,000, it'd be nice to see the specifics, not just the estimates or what you're saying.
I could answer that a little bit in that it's a catch-22 of, it's hard to raise money to engineer this unless there's a source of water to engineer it for. And so our budget estimates are very crude right now because we can't go farther than design if we don't know we have water for projects.
But you can come up with a $1.7 million fine on us if we don't supply the water. I mean, that's my concern what happens if our wastewater treatment plant breaks down and we can't provide you.
And those occurrences are absolutely covered and protected under the agreement. As would be having to divert the water to prevent some natural disaster, put out a fire. Any of those catastrophe type events beyond your control as a city or the county's control as an entity is absolutely 100% a protected situation under the agreement. This is not designed, again, as governments, to end up negatively impacting anyone. It is as good faith and estimate as can be made.
I just want to be clear on the facts with regard to liquidated damages. Point number one is 7.2 million. I thought I already said one.
I did, I did say one.
I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Sorry.
The other thing with regard to liquidated damages that's important though is that it's for any breach by the city in the first 10 years after construction of all improvements. So all of the improvements have to go in the ground before this clause becomes effective. So you do know at that point exactly what you spent. And then there is a 10-year sunset on it. So 10 years later, when perceptibly the depreciation in the assets is back down to zero, then of course the city doesn't have liquidated damage to worry about. So I just want to make sure that that was all out there. So we just want to make sure that that was all out there. Because it does change the way it affects us.
Any other questions at this point? Otherwise, I'm going to, we have a couple speakers. Kedro Della.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And thank you, Ed, for your presentation, and Holly, who was very good. I am in support of the county going ahead and selling some of this effluent to this project. I think that as Holly has pointed out, it's a very critical part of the river that we need to keep alive. And if we let it die, then there's a very big chance that we're not going to get it back again. I do have some questions as well. This is hard for me to make this twice. I have not been in favor of using treated effluent to support any river. I think that it's really very disappointing that we get to that point. But again, I think this is where we're at, and I think that this is the best thing that we can do at this point. I do wonder about not having counsel here, and I appreciate all the work that you have done on going with this contract. A couple places that just made me pause. Some of it is just grammatical, but in Agreement, Section Number Three, they talk about the sum of $35,000, but it doesn't say it one time annually. So it seems to me that that would need to be clarified. And as well as in Number Four, talking about 200 acre feet of effluent, it does not say annually, even though it does mention that in the Recyclables section. I didn't know legally it needed to also occur in the Agreement section. And also, there's a grammatical error. It's like in Number Seven of Agreement where its rights under the agreement is to retain the option payment. It didn't read correctly to me, but again, this may be legalese, and that is correct. Number Nine, each party represents that the agreement, contemplated agreement, will not in your fear. Again, that didn't make sense to me. So I don't know, again, if this is how it's supposed to read or if this is something that needs to be clarified. Another question I had was in, under the Number Eleven, also under that section. The third party, parties acknowledge that the county may, and at this point in fact, attempts to convey the rights secured by this agreement to a third party to allow the third party to complete construction of the improvements. I do understand that the third parties are needed for doing this work. But what I wonder about is to convey the rights secured by this agreement. Does this mean that the rights to the effluent then goes to this third party? So I have a question about that. Again, I think for me, the takeaway is to keep this section of the river healthy. I think it would be very, very difficult to accept that the City of Bisbee contributed to letting that section of the river die when we could do something about it. As I do support the city going ahead with this, but I think that I would feel more comfortable to have this agreement looked at by legal counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Mr. Kepka.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Looking back, I represented the state for seven years on the Upper San Pedro Partnership. I worked with Holly and 26 other agencies to try to help the river. We became the second city in all of Cochise County to become a water-sent city. Those were rules that I pushed forward and the council passed at that time. I think it's important that we do many things to try to help ourselves. One is water sense, that we don't waste water, that we try to use it in the best way we can. And also to try to help the river the best way we can. So you have absolutely three options, in my opinion, to what to do with this water. One is you just let it continue to grow or flow into the green brush draw. A lot of it will be evaporated and roll away. And within the on, maybe we'll make it down and start to recharge our aquifer. I mean, it will take, the science shows that. Number two is you're going to save and say it's a resource and I'm going to sell it later for agriculture or some other reason. Well, that's one of the worst things you can do with it. I mean, Sulphur Springs Valley, all the nut tree farms, all the other things, that, there's no recharge happening. You use it for agriculture, it's gone. It's never going to help the environment out. To me, that's the worst environmental thing you can do with it. So the third thing is to help the river. So why don't we come to a compromise and help, not only help the river, but keep some for ourselves if we want to use it for agriculture or let it flow in and help recharge our aquifer. It's a win-win on both sides. I'm allowed to tell you the $60 is an acre foot. I think that's a little low, and I realize it's $90 because of the, but I would be honest, I would go back to the county and say, if you're going to go out and look for the water, let's get it to 120 and which was then being to 150. Because it's a 25-year situation. And if that would not break their ability to find the funding, I don't know what the number is. But what I've researched, I think that's reasonable because we're looking at 25 years, not just 12 years. And you cannot come back in 10 years and renegotiate because they have to have that building. I understand that. So that's my, we have done some of our part here. I think we've done enough, but we're a water-sent city. We should, it's a great resource. We should continue to do all we can to keep that section of the river. It's our part of what we could do. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kepka.
Yeah, I'd like to move to table this until we are able to talk to a lawyer.
Date specific.
I would like to table this until it's reviewed by an attorney.
We, we.
We don't have to have a date specific.
All specific.
I second it.
I would like a lawyer to look at the aspects of pricing for this river.
Also, I'd like to.
Admit the contract.
I'd also like to add in there, looking at the fact that there's a double agreement involved and how they affect each other. There's two agreements in one.
We're doing a motion.
Well, I wouldn't add any more.
Well, I may. It's to Mr. Kepka whether he accepts that.
Let's keep this simple. Let's law, let's have all the water with pricing and contract.
Do we have a second to that?
Say second.
Those in favor are signing by standing. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carried. It's six to one. I have number two. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Kepka. Everybody else who's here for this. If you wish to depart, don't feel bad. I have number two, interviews by the mayor and council with the candidates for the Big Ward Three Council seat. And it's really a wonderful thing. We have three names put forward. And we have them listed by the order in which the names came to us. And so the first name is Margaret Carton. And so I'm going to ask the chief or deputy chief to take Mr. Don and Mr. Pollard and lock them in one of the cells until we're ready.
There's more people than you that want to do that.
Well, we got more cells, too.
Your honor.
No, we got ten.
Are you, are you okay standing?
Sure.
For a few minutes.
Well, I would want to stand for three hours, but I don't think, imagine this is going to be too long.
I don't think so. How we're doing this is each, each member is asking each candidate one question.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
And so we're going to start. First of all, I want to thank you very much for your application. I've worked with you throughout the years and have enormous respect for you, so thank you. Ms. Jacomino, your question?
Hello, Plankton. What governmental experience or organizational experience do you have?
Let's see, I have both. I'm a retired lawyer. I was the legal offender here in Cochise County for a number of years. Almost 10, 12, so 12 years I was a legal offender. And then I was a ex pro temp for eight years. And I was, let's see, I'm on the board of the Bisbee Foundation. I've been on the Planning and Zoning Commission here. This was when I first moved here in 1992 or 93. I was on the City Charter Review Committee in 2005, I believe it was. It was either 2005 or 2006. Bisbee Foundation and I'm board director for the Bisbee Alternative Clinic and the Cochise Dent Center. Those are my, that's it.
Ms. Jenkins.
Hi, Margaret.
Hi.
Why would anyone in their right mind want to be up at the Bisbee State Council?
Well, some people have asked me that. I'll tell you why I'm here. I'm here because I've thought about doing it before, but I wasn't going to do it while I was working as a judge pro temp because I thought it would clutter my life too much. I'm here tonight because several people asked me a few weeks ago when I was here for the city manager interviews, three or four people in my district said, why don't you do this? Would you do this? So I thought about it and I said, sure, I think I should. You know, I have no idea what to expect. I don't know everybody. I know you. I don't know Joanie well. I just know who you are, you know, David. I know Joan, and I don't know Anna well, but she's in my district. So, you know, I think it would be a good opportunity for me. For what I'm here tonight, it would have hurt to have a lawyer on the council. I hope they're recon. I do that for people. But, you know, basically, I think it would be an honor to serve on the council because I love Bisbee. That's why I'm here. I love Bisbee. I care about it. I care what happens. I read the newspaper. Most of you know or write letters to a newspaper. But I think democracy is not a, not something you sit back and watch. Thank you.
Thank you. What's the single most important issue facing Bisbee and what can you do about fixing that?
Well, I'll start by saying I don't imagine that I can single-handedly do anything except do my best to perform on the seat of council.
How can you contribute to its ownership?
How I can contribute, well, the issue to me, the issue with this water seems to be a critical one at this time. But there are other issues in Bisbee that I see. Jobs is an issue. Parking is an issue. And.
Okay, the single most, in your opinion?
In my opinion, the single most. I don't know if I can answer that. I don't know if I know enough to answer that. I think money is an issue. I think, you know, having an income is an issue. I think Bisbee has a lot of issues that need attention. And I don't know, I don't have enough information to do an analysis and give it a priority. But as issues come up or as I see them, I can bring them up and do my best to research them and contribute as a city council member.
Ms. Jones.
So apart from reading contracts, Margaret, what specific skills do you think you can bring to the council?
Well, I bring a history of Bisbee. We have lived here for 28 years. I bring organizational skills. I bring analytical skills. I bring, I think I'm a good communicator. I think I communicate well. And I try to make sure when I'm communicating that the other person, that we're on the same page, which I think is an important skill for anybody, to have a communication skill where both people are on the same page and you're not talking about one thing and I'm talking about something else and we wind up screaming at each other. And it's pointless. So I think I have good communication skills.
Thank you.
Ms. Hanson.
Good evening, Margaret. Nice to see you. Thank you for volunteering to wear my, be one of the people out of their minds.
You're wearing my necklace. I almost wore it tonight.
Oh, it would have been twins.
Yes, we would.
What is most needed in Ward Three? And are you willing to advocate to ensure it is accomplished?
What is, I don't think I understood the question.
What does Ward Three?
Oh, Ward Three. What's the most important thing in Ward Three?
What's most needed?
What's most needed? Probably pulling together, I think. I don't know a lot of people. I've lived there for four years. I know my neighbors. The streets are good. You know, occasionally there are lights out. I think that becomes a problem, the lights are out. I don't see lots and lots of problems in Ward Three. Anna doesn't know where you live in Ward Three. I live on Penalt Road. I'm right up from, right up behind the motel there. I think probably there have been some, we haven't been, but there have been some burglaries that I don't think Ward Three is alone in that, though. I don't know where they come from, but we're close to, you know, some of Ward Three is close to the highway. And I don't know, there's, you know, most of the people in Ward Three have septic tanks. So I don't know if plumbing is an issue. I don't have a septic tank. I bought a house that somebody Jerry rigged into this. Whether it was legal or not, I didn't do it, but I'm part of the city. I'm part of the city's rumor system. So, you know, I don't know. And I haven't, it's a pretty congenial group of people, as I see it. They can wave and talk and I walk, I walk my dog around is how I meet people. And I don't know if any, you know, those problems there. That would be in.
Thank you.
Good night.
Are there some, Anna?
Excuse me. Ms. Mike.
Thank you, Ms. Carton. They're ready to interview here. And we can talk about the issues later. But my question is, Bisbee is a charter city. Have you read our charter? And if so, what do you feel is the most important aspect of it?
I have not only read the charter, I was on the Charter Review Commission. So we went through it line by line and updated it. What is the most, well, I think the structure of the government is, the city government is probably the most important issue. I think zoning is. I think zoning is very important. I think the zoning laws are there for a reason, as some of you may know. I like the fact that it is reviewed every five years to bring it into whatever changes occur in society. So it's not, you know, carved in stone with people adhering to things that are no longer valid or no longer important. And that kind of diminishes the value of our laws. The former government we have is important. That would be my most important thing.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you like me to escort Mr. Hart?
Yeah.
You can escort that out while she escorts. I can... Could I have your... I just need an electric.
He came on my jury, I guess. I walked through like two rows.
I'll let you know that obviously the council meeting will not start at seven. We will be having a council meeting. Karen?
So we had a call with public and I was for number two, so we're not...
You will have your...
After all the interviews.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I thought there were four. All right, thank you.
Baby Fray Max. I had a chance to turn around and he must have jumped out because he was back here. And then I jumped down and I was like, heck! What a time during the pandemic! You know, I was like, what am I going to do with this thing?
Well, Mr. Dullum, I want to indicate that I sincerely appreciate you also putting your name in. And your... Didn't indicate that all three individuals are in our packet with their backgrounds and so forth. And I'm sure the council has read that and they might be audience and is available to them also. With that, we're going... Each council member is going to be asking me one question. And we're starting with Ms. Jacomino.
Welcome. What governmental experience or organizational experience do you have?
Retired Navy, twenty years. I've worked on the Sustainability Council for five years. I've worked in and of different organizations. I've presented to Kwanis for here, been on their board directors for several years. Presented to the Pro Pacilla here.
Thank you, Mr. Duggan. Why would anybody in their right mind want to be on the Bisbee City Council?
I was blackmailed.
Good enough.
I was red marks.
What's the single most important issue facing Bisbee? And how can you contribute to its solution?
I cannot call it a single issue, but the area of sustainability, after working in it for so many years, gave me the big picture of what's going on in the community. And within that, I have to say water. Without water, you don't have sustainability, everything else collapses. I've got strong feelings about the fluent. I think we need to research that even further to where all the cards are on the table. I want to see a backup water system in case electricity goes off. I've talked about this for many years. I've learned in the sustainability plan. Next to that is, within sustainability room sustainability, studying low economic projects such as manufacturing, possibly agriculture out of the city property, start promoting that to see if anybody considers business plans and wants to grow crops or something to this area.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Can you just talk for a couple minutes about the personal qualities you feel you can bring to the council?
Humor. I... my personal qualities. I'm a registered independent and have been for well over twenty years. I deal with issues and I get pretty hard on drilling information to get the... Get to the core or the root of what we need to find to get solid decision-making. And I avoid the attacks on personalities, even though sometimes when I do some and draw a hammer it can come across, but it's... to me, it's about issues. We're in a very, very divided community right now, as is the nation. And the two parties we have here are pro Smith and anti Smith. And to not take sides and to take issue and deal on a case-by-case basis with what needs to be addressed and dealt with, and it's not always friendly. But it gets the balance of facts, it gets to the core of what needs to be taken care of.
Thank you.
Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Earl, for volunteering to be part of the interviews for the Ward Three. And being part of the people not in their right mind. My question is, what is most needed in Ward Three? And are you willing to advocate to ensure it's accomplished?
The... Most needed, I can't say as anyone think, but the charrette. I work... I've worked on the charrette some. And it has a lot of sustainability items in it. I'd like to see Ward Three get its own, lack of a better term, either plaza or downtown area. The strip mall isn't quite doing it, but a place where we can go in the evening sunset and get coffee or ice cream or something where people can gather. It'd be, you know, something I envisioned for a long time. I took the mayor up behind Safeway where the old rail yards were, where this originally established Don Woods. It's a walk that would get somebody to build a Spanish-type architecture community up here for people. For the bedroom community of Ward Three. A playground. I mean, we've got twelve parks in the whole community. But we're just, I think, getting the school, getting a playground for that, for the kids down there sitting playing out in the street. Cars don't drive, we need a place to have them go to. So Bisbee, I have no resentment against what they're doing. It's our banker, that's where our cash flow is coming from. But we've got the workers and the community, the bedroom community, that's in it. And we need to kind of take care of them, the population out there.
Thank you.
Ms. Klein?
Welcome, Earl.
Thank you.
My question is, Bisbee is a charter city. Have you read our charter? If so, what do you feel is the most important aspect of it?
I've been through the charter. I was... I put an application to be on charter review and interviewed it. I feel that by and large, the charter's pretty good. A good model. There's a few modifications that I would look at that maybe does suggest to a committee of admission. But by and large, I found the most definitions and most processes in it to be pretty good.
Thank you. Can we take Mr. Dullum back to jail?
Yes. One hand.
I'm sorry, I tried to unmute the application. Wait, doc.
What did you do? You were on the train?
I haven't talked to him. I can't see closer.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
I sincerely appreciate you putting your name forward and also for being a member of the council. Thank you. What we're going to do is, each council member is going to ask you one question. And then we're going to send you back to jail. Okay? Seriously, we're going to ask you one question. And we're going to start with Ms. Jacomino.
You're welcome. What governmental experience or organizational experience do you have?
As far as governmental experience, I have twenty-eight years in the military. I was the base civil engineer and the squadron commander at the 162nd Fighter Wing until 2003 when I retired. I was responsible for the capital development program that resulted in that facility becoming an eighty-acre base from a forty-six-acre base. Not only was I responsible for obtaining the contractors to design the facilities for an eighty-dollar capital development program, but I was responsible for getting the funding from the Pentagon to pay for those facilities. I had to compete with a hundred other engineers in the United States for those funds. And in 2003, when I left, the capital development program was essentially a hundred percent complete. I was also... The best way to describe it is to say that I was like a city manager. We had eighty acres, twelve hundred people during the week, twenty-four hundred people on weekends once a month. We had a capital budget, we had an operation and maintenance budget. The facility manager worked for me, the fire department worked for me. I was responsible for the entire operation and maintenance of that facility.
Thank you.
Good. Ms. Higgins? Ah, yes. I realize that this may not be an appropriate question based upon, do you want the time here? So it's... But why would anybody in their right mind want to be on the Bisbee City Council?
I ask myself that question.
Thanks for saying that. That's a good enough answer. Sir, what's the most single... What is the single most important issue facing Bisbee? And how can you contribute to its solution?
I think that the most important issue facing Bisbee is revenue versus expenses. And the way I handle a situation like that, I've always felt that collaboration is the best way to solve problems. But if you can't collaborate with people, then compromise is the next best solution. I have been able to work with people in high-stress environments and to still maintain respect in the form of the people that I work with to the common goal of achieving a common objective. So that's how... that's what I feel there's a problem facing Bisbee would be, or is.
Money.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Can you just talk for a couple minutes about what personal qualities you have that you feel you can bring to council?
I'll go back to collaboration and cooperation and compromise. Those are the three things that I think regardless of your politics or your persuasion, those are the keys that open the door to success as far as reaching a consensus on an issue that could be contentious or an issue that is complicated and requires many points of view and many perspectives from an experience standpoint to solve those problems. And I've been very successful in my career using those qualities to obtain objectives that might be not everyone's best cooperative thinking.
Thank you.
Ms. Hanson?
Thank you very much for volunteering to be here and volunteering to put your name in the map. My question is, what is most needed in Ward Three? And are you willing to advocate to ensure it's accomplished?
I can't honestly answer that question, but I can tell you that one of the things that I would do if I were selected for this position was to become familiar with the constituents in Ward Three, to reach out to the people who live here and find out what issues are important to them so that I could best represent their interests. It's a learning curve for me. I'll be the first to jump in.
Thank you.
Ms. Klein?
Welcome, Mr. Hall. And it's always a learning curve, even now. My question is, Bisbee is a charter city. Have you read our charter? And what do you feel is the most important aspect of it?
I have not read the charter, so I can't answer that question, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, sir. You may sit. And thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll get the other two veteran people. Do you think we can get the bench and deliver?
Seriously?
We got the...
We got Dylan's.
What do you call it? Dylan's, yeah. I would be afraid to ask us. We have three people signed up that now want to speak, and the first is Charlotte LeVard. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here and listen to the three candidates. And I have a personal knowledge of Margot McCartney for six years, and she has been active in the alternative clinic in Old Visby and offering a radio. I know her to be a person of integrity. I don't believe she has told a lie since I've known her. She gives you her unadulterated opinion. If you ask her, I was very impressed that she knew the charter and that she had been on the review board. She is, I would say, competent in her ability to assess people and situations from her time as an attorney and also her time to sit as a judge. When you are in that capacity, you get to know people and their circumstances, and yet you have to interpret the law in regard to those situations and people. And I feel in many capacities, but my experience with the three candidates leads me to vote towards Margot McCartney. I've known her as an individual, part of the community, always compassionate, always knowledgeable. Her knowledge of the charter, her ability to give a legal perspective, and her compassion as an human being, I would highly recommend her. I'm proud to be part of this Ward Three, and I think she'd be a wonderful asset for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Strong.
Hello, my name is Sharon Strong. I'm also highly deprived, so... No, challenged. I'm not highly deprived. I just want to say that I've lived in Visby for thirty years and just have recently moved to Ward Three. And I've known Margot for thirty years. I must say this, I was very impressed with all three people who presented themselves today. But I've known Margot for thirty years. We've sung together, we've meditated together, we've done... We've been friends for many, many years, and I've always been very impressed with her Medal of Acuity, especially her letters to the editor, and I think that she brings a great deal that would be an asset to our city, so...
Carol, here's your card.
I'll just hand it to her.
And once again, I'm with Visby and Visby all three. I've known Margot for a great... Most of the time that we've been here, and I've worked with her in a number of capacities, working from the Visby Community Corps. She was a legal defender at the time I was a public fiduciary. And I've watched the effects of her work on the foundation, the Visby Foundation, and I've been very, very impressed with the way that she sees issues and looks at all the sides and does a fair and equitable job in coming to advocate or work against them. Thank you. I highly recommend Margot.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have a motion for executive session? I move to go into executive session to discuss and consider the appointment of council member for vacant Ward Three positions authorized by ARS 38-431.03A1. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Please, we are in executive session. Everyone? Thank you. We have a motion, and do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor of coming out of executive session, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel? Do we have another motion?
I move to approve the appointment of Louis Pollak as council member to the vacant Ward Three position.
Suckey.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cordova.
Councilmember Jacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, Jesus.
Mr. Pollak? I just... Can we keep it down so we can... We've got a long night here. Sir, we're going to take a break in a couple minutes, and you're going to be sworn in. And then you're going to be sitting right next to this Jacamino for the remainder of the evening, all right, sir? We call this trial by fire, sir.
You need to call someone to let them know that you're going to be late.
I left my cell phone at home.
Number three, discussion possible approval of a motion to go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-430312. Discuss and consider the appointment... I'm sorry. That's right, we moved the other one on too. All right. And Ms. Pollak, this was obviously my error. I thought we were... Such a convoluted night, I thought you were doing something else. Is there anything you'd like to... I assume...
It's over and done, Mayor. I was claiming to comment about executive session, and it's over and done. I'm sure we'll have another opportunity to talk about any of these.
Oh, I'm sure you will. But I do apologize, it was inadvertent. I do apologize. Okay. And do we have a motion to adjourn? I move to adjourn.
A second.
All those in favor adjourned, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We stand adjourned for about five minutes.